....................................
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Once again, that was Eric Nagy, our Director of Policy and Projects, that led us in the pledge. I apologize, my microphone wasn't on. Good morning, it's great to see everybody. I'm sure that you are noticing this is the first time you've seen us in probably a year without masks on, but the three of us are fully vaccinated. We are also socially distant, but we're going to try to keep the masks off, but we have them because there are times when it's still appropriate, or you feel more comfortable if you're wearing a mask. So, do we have some row officers here? Just wanted to say a quick shout out?
Good morning, I'm Miss Ballerini, Bucks County Treasurer.
Good morning, I'm Lauren Corrigan, Bucks County DA.
Thank you. And we have several proclamations today. We'd like to begin with the High School Poet of the Year, so I will ask Commissioner Harvey to please read that proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to recognize the Bucks County High School Poet of the Year. About six months ago, we recognized the poet laureate of Bucks County, and so now we're doing the student poet. So, I'll read the proclamation, and we're actually going to have, we have the poet here herself, and she'll read a couple of her poems to us. Whereas the County of Bucks and Bucks County Community College annually sponsor a High School Poet of the Year competition, and whereas the 2021 honoree is Casey Epstein Gross, a senior at Salisbury School, and whereas Ms. Epstein Gross was selected from more than 150 Bucks County High School students who submitted entries to the judging panel, composed of current Bucks County poet laureate Edna J. Muller and 2019 poet laureate Mary Jo. Lobello Jerome, and whereas in the words of Judge Muller, "The lines of the winning poems are pure excitement, offering the reader a fantastic kaleidoscope of pungent images." This poet masters language, bends it to her will with an onslaught of sometimes uncomfortable true images. And whereas Ms. Epstein Gross's work has been published, or is forthcoming, in Soundings East, Up North Lit, Raw Art Review, Rare Bird Review, Permafrost Magazine, and Shalor Magazine. Known for her intelligence, curiosity, and work ethic, she serves as co-president of her senior class, takes nativist roles on behalf of human rights and other compassionate causes, and recently won a national gold medal in the 2021 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And whereas Ms. Epstein Gross, three student runners-up and three finalists were honored at a virtual celebration and reading held May 16th, which was livestreamed and posted to the YouTube channel of the Bucks County Community College. And whereas, celebrating its 34th year, the High School Poet of the Year contest is part of the Bucks County Poet Laureate Program, directed by Dr. Ethel Rackin, Professor of Language and Literature at Bucks County Community College, now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize Casey Epstein Gross as the 2021 High School Poet of the Year in the County of Bucks. In doing so, we applaud Ms. Epstein Gross's creativity, creative, excuse me, creative gift of poetry, commend her contribution to the literary tradition of our community, and wish her luck in all her future pursuits. We encourage all Bucks County residents to look to her poems for insight, enjoyment, and inspiration.
Thank you for that. And Casey is also here with Dr. Ethel Rackin from the Bucks County Community College's poet laureate program, so thank you. We'd love to hear a couple of your poems.
Sure thing. Thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here. That was incredible. Thank you. The first one I'm going to read was published in Thin Air Magazine in 2020, "The Most Efficient Way to Eat an Orange." "The most efficient way to eat an orange is to bite right into it, to scarf down the meat and the flesh all in one big gulp and swallow it down whole. Cherish the rind and let it scrape against your stomach, sandpaper on skin. A spoonful of sugar makes the medicine go down, but why not eat the spoon as well? Sip your coffee with me on the balcony. I'll smile at you while I swirl in the milk and Splenda. I've always wanted to drink coffee black, but I've never had the stomach for it. Of course, you've never been one to sugarcoat things, but I will relish in lies and artificial sweetness until I lie deep in the ground. I wish I was a black coffee, truth-telling, orange rind woman, but the sky is too wide and the grass too tall, the colors too vivid and the wind too loud. Maybe one day I will appreciate the vast bigness of the world for myself, but for now I will just tell you how much I love it." The next one I'm going to read is "Electo, Queen of the Furies," published in Permafrost Magazine. "Electo, Queen of the Furies. I want to make myself wild again. Let foam drip from my mouth, run rabid round street corners. A woman possessed has the prettiest eyes, or so they say. I can't much remember how mine looked, but I imagine it was a green watery type of piercing. It's been so long since I last bathed in a college fountain, drank silky pennies off the floor, swallowed rusty chlorine by the gallon. Oh, how I relish the taste. But now my fingers skim soft wood at cafe tables. Now I never drink hot coffee without the use of a spoon. Sedation is the most agreeable form of sedition. Hold my mouth open with a chopstick like old times. Stick that needle in my gums. You always thought it was strange how I licked my lips afterwards. I always thought it was strange how much chemical sleep tasted of sugarcane and sweet lemon." And the last one that I'm going to read today is "It's Kind of a Really Nice Day." "It's kind of a really nice day. I have lived among the saddles and the geese, tied tight like a woman gone feral. I have been born again once in New Hampshire, birth trauma circling around me like a belt. I have found the devil in public bathroom mirrors, cold eyes trapped in the baby fat of my face. I have scattered myself through the northeast, throughout the northeast, ashes from an urn brought on a wintry road trip. I have scaled a fire escape with broken fingernails, swallowed a star and puked it up in a sink. I have hauled logs and run from bears outside castles, inhaled burnt acceptance letters at bonfires. I have stood like a shadowed rabbit in blue fields, evening air plump and ripening by the second. I have yearned and sung and shat and raged and bin and bin and bin and bin and bin. But that breath in your eyes, when you sit smooth, on a couch, on the porch, on the blacktop, that curve of your arm when you rest it on his shoulder, the way you hand off the grocery list, and kiss cheeks with ease and make even the word "hey" sound blanketed in wool, wrapped in wist and spun sugar, smelling like chopped wood in June, that is all new to me." Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was great. It was great to read them, but even better to hear you read them. Thank you so much for coming here for that. I don't know if, Doctor, did you want to say anything?
Just to thank you again for supporting the program.
Thank you. Take good care. Do you want to come up and we'll do a picture?
Sure.
You can just, we'll go right here. It was very nice. Thank you. Want to come up? We're talking to Dr. Rackin to help join you. Thank you. Keep that, keep writing. The next thing we have is a proclamation for World Day for Cultural Diversity, and Commissioner T. Geralmo will read that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the diverse cultural fabric of Bucks County is an integral part of what makes the county an exceptional place to live, work, and to do business. Amid the trauma, tragedy, and struggles of the last year, our cultures have served as a source of comfort and refuge, helping us all to weather the COVID-19 pandemic, keeping us close as the disease kept us apart. Since 2002, people in countries around the world have observed World Day for Cultural Diversity for Dialogue and Development on May 21st as designated by the United Nations General Assembly. Whereas sometimes referred to World Day or Diversity Day, May 21st is recognized as a time to celebrate culture in its innumerable forms, as well as the key role intercultural dialogue plays in achieving peace and sustaining development. The Bucks County Human Relations Council and its mission to tackle discrimination and harassment occurring on the basis of race, culture, and religions embodies the value at the core of Diversity Day. The County of Bucks recognizes the need to promote diversity, inclusion, and cooperation among all people. Now therefore do we, the Board of the County Commissioners, hereby proclaim May 21st, 2021, as World Day for Cultural Diversity for Dialogue and Development throughout the County of Bucks. In doing so, we encourage all county residents to join us in celebrating the rich tapestry of cultures in Bucks County and beyond, and to support the ongoing dialogue in pursuit of mutual understanding and sustainability. Congratulations, and I think we're going to have some comments from Bernard Griggs.
It's actually, Bernard's going to come up with Celia.
Yes, with, also Cecilia Sharp, who is the Bucks County Human Relations, from the Bucks County Human Relations Council. They both could come up together.
Sure. Celia, did you have some remarks if you'd like to make them? That's great.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Cecilia's going to make the remarks in observance and acceptance of the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. This is a great honor. You won't believe my path to here, to this podium. I was born in Cali, Colombia, South America, and I tell you, because for my foreign accent, some people don't realize where I come from, so now I do know where I come from. I came to Bucks County in 1994, and the motivation for me to come to the United States was to get my higher education, to go to graduate school. So, I was lucky, I accomplished it, and I got, after working in science, I got my bioetics, master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania. So, that was one of the things I am very proud. To tell you about the cultural diversity, when I came to Bucks County, I went, do you remember Gennardis, the grocery store? I came from Washington, DC, and when I went to Gennardis and saw the prices of the groceries, I couldn't believe it. So, I piled my cart with all of these groceries because they were so inexpensive. So, I went to the cash register, and everything registered, my hat, my cart full of groceries, and then I looked into my purse, and I didn't have my checkbook or my wallet. And I panicked. And I said, "Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot my wallet." And the person at the cash register looked at me and said, "Don't worry. Bring it when you come back to the store next time." I almost fall on my chair, because with my face, my accent, to find out, I said, "This is a good place to be and raise my children." So, I am very lucky, they went to CBEES. Then my daughter became a MND. My older daughter is an entrepreneur, so thanks, Bucks County, for all that education. I've been involved in cultural diversity for many, many years. I've been with the Human Relations Council for several years, and they are doing a wonderful work. And, you know, Chris now is the head of the council, and we try to, as much as we can, to reach out to the community that is here. Some of you don't see it, but the ones that you see it is just one person. There is an underground community of people who clean your pools, cut the grass, clean your houses, and do so many things. And I am very connected with that sector of the immigrants, and who needs somebody who can interpret. And I volunteer at the Dulles Town Free Clinic as an interpreter for people who have difficulty with English. So, I am very happy. Thank you so much. And please keep doing it, because this is amazing. You won't believe what it means to an immigrant when an American says hello. It's just amazing, when they hear somebody speak English to them, because everybody presume, "Oh, you don't know English. I don't care." You will be surprised. Sometimes say hi in English, and you will be amazed of the reception and the answer from all of these poor communities who are here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for serving on our Human Relations Council. I actually wanted to see if Chris Ballerini, could you just give us a 30-second, if you don't mind stepping over there, view of the council, and maybe, hell, if anybody was interested in getting involved, or what the council does. And then we'll go back to Celia in just a second.
Certainly, Commissioner. I'll take off a different hat. I serve as the chairperson for the Bucks County Human Relations Council. We are in desperate need of members, and the more diverse, the better. So, we encourage membership, certainly to reach out through the Bucks County website, certainly through myself personally on my personal email, christ.ballerini@gmail.com to reach out, and we're always looking for members. So, what we strive for is to eliminate discrimination and promote diversity within Bucks County. That is our main objective. The main goal also, as we are a council appointed by the Commissioners, I'm having trouble speaking, is to educate. So, our sole purpose at this time is to educate the community on these issues that unfortunately do exist in Bucks County. It's very easy for us to get kind of complacent, but we, our numbers say differently about our diversity, and it's important for us to keep promoting a message of inclusivity and to eliminate diversity, eliminate discrimination at all levels.
Terrific. Thank you.
So, I know that Celia has prepared something for you today. I don't know if you want to do the photo first of the proclamation, and then she has prepared something. You're going to be so happy.
Perfect. We'll do it that way.
So, if you'd like to take them, right? Thank you so much for being here. I don't know if they have the camera that way.
People were thinking about what's going on in there. I made some Colombian empanadas. And what you do is take the empanadas, cut it, and put the sauce inside with the little spoons. So, enjoy it.
Don't leave them in front of the DA too long. There won't be any left.
We're going to fight over these. I can feel it. These meetings are getting better and better with this.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. That was very kind of you to do that, and fun. We will try not to eat anything right away until I can read the next proclamation.
Business first.
And I will read this one, and this is "To Celebrate EMS: Emergency Medical Services Week." "So, whereas emergency medicine is a vital public service directly responsible for saving, extending, and improving countless lives each year, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the importance of this dedicated network of professionals and volunteers has been made only more apparent during the COVID-19 pandemic, when society has called upon them with unprecedented urgency and frequency. And whereas Bucks County's emergency medical services community went above and beyond to answer the call these past 15 months and served the county residents with bravery and distinction amid widespread fear, tragedy, and turmoil. And whereas it has never been more appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of our medical services providers. So, now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 22, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week throughout the County of Bucks. In doing so, we join all Bucks County residents in thanking those who have dedicated their lives to ensuring the safety and well-being of others through the administration of swift, life-saving medical treatment. And as a member of the Health Council, I am delighted to have you here today and to provide this proclamation. Evan Resnikov's here, and I'm not sure, is everybody going to come up here? Larry Luce? If you would introduce everybody, that'd be great.
Yes. Larry Luce, I'm the Director of Emergency Health Services. Our office is responsible not just for the enforcement of the EMS rules and regulations, but we also are the EMS advocacy group also. This is Evan Resnikov. He is President of the Bucks County Chiefs Association, and this is Colleen Campbell. She is Chief of St. Mary's EMS. It was really hard when Larry King asked me to make some brief comments, because with EMS, I could go on forever. There's just so much to talk about. But just to summarize who EMS is, because most people don't know, it's easy to say, it's just the ambulance driver, just the paramedic. We are the people that answered the call for emergency calls last year for over 55,000 calls, transported almost 40,000 patients to the hospital. We're the group of 1,677 providers that fill our ambulances and our quick response services. There are a total of 17 EMS services that provide 911 care, another nine that do emergency transport care from one facility to another, and we have 24 quick response services who go out and provide care prior to ambulance, the ambulance arriving. And that may be a fire service, maybe a police department. That being said, EMS is the kids at the public safety table and the kids at the public health, because we kind of straddle both those spheres. In public safety, it's the easy ones. It's the 911 service that comes out. At public health, when there is an opioid crisis, EMS provided leave behind Narcan and stepped up to that challenge. When it comes to public health, when there was a concern about Ebola, EMS agencies stepped up on how we're going to transport these patients to tertiary care. And we are the people that our healthcare systems depend on to take patients from their facility to tertiary care. We are the people that help improve their incomes. If you have a heart attack and need a cardiac catheterization, the actions that we take prior to get into the hospital improves outcomes remarkably. When you look at cardiac arrest, when I started here 15 years ago, we only measured, our target was getting the patient to the hospital with a pulse and a blood pressure. That was our target. Today, our target is, is getting people discharged from the hospital, doing the same things they were doing right before their cardiac event. In the beginning, 15 years ago, when we started measuring our times, cardiac arrest, we got people, 6% of the time, they got to the hospital with a pulse and a blood pressure. Today, 6% of the patients that suffer out of hospital cardiac arrest are discharged from the hospital, which just goes to talk about how we are involved in the healthcare system and are often forgot about. Our industry is only 55 years old, and my thought process, where I currently am, 55 is the new 25, to be clear. But when you compete against other public safety models, such as just public health, the fire service and police department, we are still the babies at the table. And sometimes we are remarkably underfunded for what we do. And I know everybody will have that, but truly, we are the healthcare life net for the people that can't get there on their own. That being said, as you talked about COVID, I have been in the EMS service since I was in high school. I can tell you, for the first time since 1988, I had EMS providers last year tell me they were afraid. We went through the World Trade Center attacks. We've been through Ebola, but to have providers with 25, 30 years' experience say, who have worked in metropolitan cities, come back and say, "This is the first time I'm scared to go to work, and even more scared to go home." Thanks.
Before you come up here, can I ask you one thing, since you brought that up? How are you feeling about the vaccination effort?
The vaccination? We've done a remarkable job. What I can tell you, it was approved in the second week of December, and there is no way we could do it fast enough. Our EMS providers were offered, over 900 EMS providers were offered a vaccination within two weeks of it being approved, of the first shot being given in the United States. So, that being said, over the time, every EMS provider has had an opportunity to get vaccinated.
Terrific. Colleen or Evan, did you have any comments you wanted?
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for initiating the proclamation for EMS Week. And this week, this year, this week's proclamation is more meaningful than usual, and as read in the proclamation because of what we've just lived through for the last 15 months. I've been an EMS provider for 26 years, and never before have I and my colleagues ever worked under a situation for as long a period as we have, as we have in the last 15 months. We were among the first to be exposed to patients with COVID, and we've adapted, retrained, and overcome the last 15 months, and responded without fail to the residents of Bucks County and business owners who were still working to respond to their needs. EMS in this county could not function without the support of the county commissioners, municipal officials, and most important, the residents in each municipality that support us through property tax revenues and donations through subscription drives. So, the key, all of these keys, all these pieces of the puzzle help make the EMS system run, so that our over 1,600 providers can do what they do every day. I want to thank everyone for their support.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the acknowledgement of all those providers that we talked about. Even though we were afraid, we showed up to work, we continue to show up to work. COVID is not over, although the numbers are looking remarkably well. We still encourage people to social distance for a little while, wash their hands, and we'll still be there. We may still have masks on, we may still have eye protection on, because we still have to protect our ambulance and decon it in between every patient. So we wouldn't have been able to work without the help of our hospitals, with the help of the Emergency Health Office and our local fire department, who deconned most of our ambulances after each patient was offloaded, and then we were ready to accept the next patient. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you, thank you very much. If you'd like to come up, we'd like to take a picture and...
I just want to add one thing, in addition to everything that was said. Hey, Newtown Ambulance, since Evan's standing here, they took over the testing for the entire central Bucks area for teachers and students, offering a rapid testing site. We offer that upper and lower Bucks Government Service Center, but Newtown Ambulance stepped up and did a community service for all teachers and students to help keep schools open for the last six months. I just want to thank them publicly for doing that, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
And finally, today, we are also going to be celebrating Community Action Month, and I'm hoping that we have some technological whiz here today to bring some people in, but Commissioner Dejera Alamo will begin by reading the proclamation. I see it's working.
Okay, thank you. Whereas community action agencies emerge from the heart of President Lyndon Johnson's 1964 Declaration of an Unconditional War on Poverty and Subsequent Passage of the Economic Opportunity Act. Whereas the Bucks County Opportunity Council is a designated community action agency for Bucks County with a mission to reduce poverty and work as a partner with the community to promote economic self-sufficiency. The Nonprofit Opportunity Council has put a human face on poverty for 56 years by advocating for homeless and low-income Bucks County residents so that they might replace despair with opportunity. Whereas the Opportunity Council builds and promotes economic stability as a vital aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities, which in turn promotes self-sufficiency. The Opportunity Council implements innovative and cost-effective services locally that are proven to improve the lives and living condition of the impoverished. Whereas the Opportunity Council has been a key partner with the county of Bucks in providing essential services during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic here. Community action ensures the participation and involvement of the community, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. Now therefore do we, the Board of the Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim May 2021 as Community Action Month throughout the county of Bucks. In so doing, we recognize the hard work and dedication of the Bucks County Opportunity Council Incorporated in its role as the county's designated nonprofit community action agency. Congratulations, and I think we have Erin is here.
Hi, that's Erin Lucas, and we have Eileen Alabar here too, and give it to you first, Erin.
Oh, okay. Thank you, and permission to properly attend to the actual one. We feel so proud to be a part of this community and grateful for your support, especially over this past year. If community action works to break the cycle of poverty across, all across the country, and we feel busy and happy even within the county. We are small, but mighty, with just under 50 staff, approximately a entire county. This work can be very challenging, but also so rewarding. And ultimately, it has helped people reach their dreams and also move towards self-sufficiency, working on video and throughout this pandemic, to help people see where they are, how it's a role. They work hard, don't fall into any difficulty. I can actually just say that we feel lucky to be helping people and choosing lives every day. That's the motto of community action, helping people and choosing lives. And in this county, you always be easy for us to keep doing your work. So we're just thankful and honored to be a part of the community and that we're gonna help. We couldn't have done it this past year, especially without all the folks who were special.
Thank you. Eileen, were you gonna say anything?
I just wanted to say, we're so grateful to the commissioners for your support. You help us to give every resident in Bucks County an opportunity to contribute to our local economy and to keep Bucks County thriving. And I know that so many in our community gave so much volunteering, donating food, delivering food to homebound, doing tax cooperation for folks who had complex issues with the past year of unemployment and past year of retirement and talent up here, and Bucks County stepped up and gave back. So thank you so much for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I know, I think I have referred more people to you in the past 14 months than I did in 30 years, so thank you for being there and being quite a partner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll send the proclamation to you. Thank you. Are there any brief public comments online?
No, Commissioner.
Are there any public comments here? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. There is one item on the consent agenda that I thought we just should hear from Kevin Spencer about for a moment, has to do with approving the increase of the fees at our various recreational facilities. So although this is on the consent agenda, we think it's important to... Kevin, explain it.
Certainly, thank you, Commissioner. Actually, these rates and the fees we're gonna talk about today are specific just to the golf course. With our new management firm, Spirit Golf, that has come on in the spring of this year, they've been extremely busy down there. We've had a lot of improvements we're making to the course, the county's actually purchasing new equipment to help with the mowing and the things, a part of our obligation to that contract. But we're getting some great feedback from the public that are playing there. What you have before you is essentially looking at a correction, I should say. The way the course works, there are membership fees, you can pay a membership or purchase a membership, and that entitles you to discounted rates. What is published on our website is actually those discounted rates are from Monday through Friday. What we're actually looking at is offering a discounted rate that would then also be on the weekends. So those who can't play during the week, we're introducing a kind of a weekend discounted rate, slightly more than what the weekday rate would be, but still discounted from the regular price. So that's what you'll see on here. There will be a discounted rate on the weekend for individuals, which is around $12. There would be a weekend rate for junior players, that would be around $10 on the weekends, and then the same thing, a weekend rate for seniors, which would be about $10 again. The full rate would be $16 if you did not have a membership currently. So there's the introduction of the weekend memberships. What we're also looking at adding, again, for non-members, to try and attract more people to play on the course in the afternoons, is introducing a twilight rate. So if you come to play at the course after 4 o'clock, you'd be looking at a discounted rate of $10. So the regular weekday rate can continue to remain at $16. We're looking at introducing a new weekend rate, which would increase from $16 to $18. So non-members who are playing on the weekends would be $18. Again, they're looking at also introducing that weekend twilight rate, which would be $12. So essentially, and the final one that we're introducing through Spirit and the recommendation is to introduce a league play rate, so to kind of attract some more leagues that want to play there. So if there's a group of 16 or more playing in a league, that rate would be $10 for those who wouldn't have to be a membership, but just if you have a group playing with the leagues, then you could be entitled to that discounted rate there. So a lot of good things we're seeing down there at the course, the new firm that's managing it and operating it's been doing a great job. We've made a lot of improvements, there's a whole bunker renovation project that has gone on down there, with some, a lot of repairs to the irrigation system, which was not functional. So that'll help them really bring that course into kind of top shape for the public and the people that play there. So we're excited about this year, so that's what we have before you.
Terrific. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Is there a motion to support numbers 1 through 14 on the consent agenda, along with the minutes from the May 5, 2021 meeting?
No move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving to the regular agenda, our first item is with the District Attorney. The contract is with Gray Shift LLC, Atlanta, Georgia, approving the contract to provide forensic software licenses in the amount of $27,995. And the District Attorney is here and able to tell us a little bit about, do you mind? Do you have a mic? You don't have a microphone there, so if you don't mind coming over. If you could tell us a little bit about this, that would be great.
This Gray Shift is a, it's a machine that when it's not being actively utilized, is the equivalent of a brick. So I know that there's a lot of concern about technology and what it can do, and who can manipulate it, who can utilize it. But this is not new technology, but it is very advanced technology. What we have used in the past, when we didn't have any other alternatives, something called a Celebrate machine, we've been using that probably for 15 years. Gray Key is one level advanced in that it enables law enforcement only with either a court order or a search warrant or with consent. There are no exceptions to that. Somebody can't just use it because they feel like it, but it enables us to further our investigations. Everybody, as you know, carries a computer GPS tracker in their pocket with them. And so every case, and I can't even really think of an exception, now has this electronic component to it investigatively. So in order to keep up with technology, we needed to not only have this Celebrate technology, which we still have and have access to, but we need this advanced-level Gray Key technology as well, because it will enable us to, in the instance where we're investigating a crime, or frankly, where we're looking for somebody that may be missing, a missing child, this will enable us to access a device that is locked. That's really the essence of it. It enables us to crack into coded devices, and most people now use coded devices. So that is it, in a nutshell, this is not new to us. I think that the reason we put it on the agenda is because there was a pretty substantial price increase in it, and that's why we're asking for some assistance through the county to help us offset that cost. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Any questions?
No, I appreciate you talking about the fact that obviously this is something that you need a warrant, you need some kind of judicial order of consent from the owner of the phone, et cetera. I'm assuming your personnel and the detectives are obviously trained on the proper procedures and policies. How long have we had this here at the county?
So we've had Celebrate, I'm gonna approximate, for 15 years. Gray Key is like the next level to that, and I would say we've had that for maybe up to about five years or so.
Okay.
So it's not new technology, but it is advanced technology. And to your point, and I know that there was some, Ms. Humphrey and I were going back and forth with some questions, so that I could be prepared. But there is no, I have no concern that somebody would go rogue and utilize this, frankly, more than I would ever have a concern about anybody, but just to assuage your concerns, this is not something that's available to support staff, it's not available even frankly to the attorneys. We don't, I don't even know where the thing is. It's housed by the detectives, you need to be trained on its use. This is similar, frankly, identical to something that also is available to every police agency at what's called the RCFL, which is the Regional Something Forensics Lab, Crime Forensics Lab, for which we contribute. But this allows us to have real present-time access, and this is something, I could look this up for you, but I believe that I'm accurate when I say that every county utilizes this same investigative tool.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Gene, any questions? Thank you very much, thanks for speaking.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next on the agenda is a contract for the Health Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health Bureau of Communicable Diseases in Harrisburg. We will approve an increase of federal immunization grant for COVID-related work in the amount of $4,745,350.96, as well as approving a federal immunization grant in the amount of $342,328. And Dr. Damsker is here with us to explain this and encourage vaccination, I think.
Yes, of course. Thank you for having me today. We normally get about $342,000 a year for, it's the federal immunization grant where we're doing our immunization work, clinics, education, the biggest part is the Vaccine for Children program, where we're making sure that providers are taking care of the vaccine appropriately. But what the larger amount is, is the federal government through the state has passed through and given us 4.7 million additional dollars, and we are utilizing the majority of that to provide vaccine clinics through our contractor, AMI, at the four locations they're doing, as well as the county location at the Warwick Center in Jamison. I believe we've done, between us and AMI, and AMI has done the vast majority of vaccines so far, about 136,000 doses in Bucks County. So it's been terrific, it's been a good partnership, and I want to just briefly talk about vaccination. I understand, you know, people have been listening to the fact that the numbers are dropping a little bit regarding vaccination numbers. That's okay, I mean, people are a little nervous, but what I will tell you is that this vaccine is safe, it's effective, and right now in our hospitals in Bucks County, there's 50 people in the hospital. Only one of those people was not vaccinated. Other way around, that would be really scary. There's 50 people in the hospital, and only one of them had been vaccinated. We had multiple deaths over the last several weeks, all those people were not vaccinated. So what I'll tell you is that the vaccine works. This is a real-life test of this vaccine, right? People keep saying, "Well, it's just experimental." Well, it's no longer experimental, this vaccine works. And I want to encourage every single person to get vaccinated. It does, it prevents severe illness and death, that's what the whole point was, right? People say, "Oh, well, it doesn't work in everybody," and that's true, there will be breakthrough cases of disease. Those people will have mild symptoms in almost every case, and they are less likely to spread that disease compared to vaccinated people, compared to unvaccinated people. So I think anyone who's considering it, who wants to wait, the data is already there showing how effective this is, and I want to encourage everybody, whether you're 12 and up, to get the Pfizer vaccine. We've done a lot of doses in that age group. They were just, a couple of weeks ago, they approved the vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds. We're doing hundreds every single day in our clinics, in that age group, which is, you know, approximately, I guess it's, you know, 6th grade to 9th grade, and a lot of those kids are being done every day. And even though the children in general are not affected by COVID in a serious way, they're still doing their part to reduce the numbers of cases in Bucks County and elsewhere, such that we get to the point where COVID is just something we live with as a small part, we're not fearful. You know, I heard what Larry said about EMS being terrified. Those days, I think, can be long over with this vaccine. And even though you know that you could still potentially get COVID, you're not gonna get very sick from it. And that's what we need to do to move forward, and everyone needs to do their part, again. It's not a required thing to do, but if you're one of those few unlucky people that still has a severe case of COVID, why would you risk that, right? We know that it's safe, we know that it works, and I can't tell you, the numbers that we have right now in Bucks County are the lowest we've had for a long, long time in case-wise. Some of that has to do with, yes, we're getting to the summer and, you know, the flu numbers drop in the summer, and that's part of it, but another part of it also is, on a long-term basis, we know that we shouldn't see any spikes after this, right? That's the difference between last summer and this summer. Is that last summer, we knew the numbers were low, but we weren't sure what was gonna happen in the fall, because no one was vaccinated. And now, if we can get enough people vaccinated, we can hope that we can avoid any of that seasonal surge that we might see once we get to November, because that is the... seasonal surge that we might see once we get to November, because that is the normal time for coronaviruses in general to surge. So we have five clinics open, well, four, soon to be four, and I encourage everyone to go. We're, we're, the four, the three AMI sites are open Tuesday through Saturdays. The Warwick site's open Wednesday through Friday. You won't have to wait a long time. You get in, you get out, and you're doing your part to protect everybody, even if you're not worried about impacting you. I just, I can't emphasize, you know, that, that, the people who say this vaccine's still experimental, yes, it has not been FDA-approved, that won't come for a few more months, but more and more data every day, the millions of people that are getting vaccinated throughout the world, just continues to, to bear that out. So, thank you.
Thank you. So you're encouraging those people who are holding back a little bit to be part of the community and join us in trying to get everybody vaccinated.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Damsker?
No, no, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions, Gene?
Thank you. Thank you. I know that you're very busy. Thank you for coming out here today. And next we have Workforce and Economic Development. There are three items. First, Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry Bureau of Workforce Development Administration in Harrisburg. This is to approve a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grant Fund in the amount of $310,000. And also to approve a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grant Fund in the amount of $105,780. And a contract with Wawa Incorporated to approve a contract to provide goal attainment incentives for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Youth Title I Training Program participants in the amount of $50,000. And Diana Crawley's here from the Workforce Development Office.
Good morning. Nice to see everyone. The three items on the agenda, the $310,000 is for participant training for dislocated workers. A dislocated worker is someone who is currently collecting or has exhausted their unemployment benefits. So the $300,000 will go for short-term certificate training and also for employer hiring and training incentives. $10,000 out of that 310,000 will be for supportive services, and that is to help people succeed in these trainings, whether it be reimbursement for gas, tolls, mileage, steel-toed boots, exam fees, anything we can provide to make sure they successfully complete the training. The $105,000 is broken down into a number of items to support our businesses. One is $50,000 for a short-term position to outreach to businesses, to provide them with our services. $35,000 is for incumbent worker training, which is for current Bucks County employers to upscale their, their present employees. $17,000 of that is for a data package for EMSI. $2,000 is to boost our social media posts, so more job seekers are seeing these employer, employer opportunities. And then lastly, on the agenda is the Wawa gift cards. That is for program participants who meet their regular benchmarks. It's mostly for credential attainment and for employee, employment retention. Any questions?
Questions?
No, we really appreciate, obviously, the last year, the, you know, the economy's been struggling. You know, a lot of people are, are looking for work, a lot of employers are looking for people to work. And so your agency is really helping to kind of help people meet in the middle and help people improve their skills. So we really appreciate all the work that you're doing, as well as Ms. Barnes.
Thank you. And the P. Curlicke Bucks County right now is open two days a week, appointment only on June 11th. They'll be open five days a week. So we're excited to open our doors.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no further questions? Is there a motion to approve the, on the regular agenda, items 15 through 17C?
No move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Budget adjustments. We have three budget adjust, two budget adjustments today, nine and 10.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. For your consideration today, adjustments number nine and 10 for the 2021 operating budget. Both adjust the budget for additional grant funds that the board just approved. Item, agenda item number 16A under the Health Department and number 17B under Workforce and Economic Development. Both of these grants are additional funding that weren't budgeted through the 21 budget, but will allow for the recognition of the revenue and the expenditure.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Damsker? Is there a motion to approve budget adjustment nine and 10?
No move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
No move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Board appointments. Commissioner Harvey, do you have any?
We have two appointments. I'll make a motion for, on drug and alcohol, we have a term that an individual left the Drug and Alcohol Commission, so we need to replace that person. They have, the Drug and Alcohol Commission themselves have requested Mr. Joshua Buchanan for a term that will end on December 1st, 2022. And Workforce Development Board has an opening for someone from the manufacturing field. And so we are putting up for nomination Mr. Mateen Afzal, who is from a company called PDC Machines, which is located in Warminster. A lot of cutting-edge technology going on in that facility. It's really very impressive. So proud to put him on for a term that will end on November 6th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Are there any other civics? Anybody have any? Okay, seeing none. The chief operating officer's report, Ms. McKevitt.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you. A couple of things. I just wanted to build on Dr. Damsker's comments earlier regarding the county's vaccine efforts. The Health Department will now be focusing on community outreach and vaccine, around vaccination hesitancy. There will be information tables and pop-up clinics at various community events throughout the rest of the spring and summer months. These efforts are going to be led by the Health Department staff, including representation from the county's emergency management team, public information, our Office of Public Information, the Bucks County Health Improvement Partnership, or BCHIP, and the Bucks County Immunization Coalition, and our contractor, AMI. We will also be continuing our homebound vaccinations. If you know someone or need a vaccine yourself, please call the Health Department. We are making appointments, and we are going out through the efforts of the emergency management team, making appointments with folks who are homebound and getting them vaccinated. Good news came today. We received the American Rescue Plan Act, half of our funding, $61 million showed up in Chris's bank account this morning. And right now, these funds will assist the county in our ongoing COVID-19 relief efforts for residents, businesses, and our nonprofit providers, commissioners, and our Human Services Division will be hosting a roundtable early June. And we will be partner, or bringing together our nonprofit social services providers to talk about what the current and future needs will look like that will support our county residents. And, and as part of that, our, that, and as part of our efforts to update our comprehensive plan, we are sending out a business survey. And within that business survey, we'll have questions that focus on, on current, the current business climate and the impacts of COVID on the businesses now and in the future, because this money expands over the next, well, four years, 24, 2024, which gives us some time to think about how and what the best possible use for these funds will be. And, and with the Commissioner's guidance, we will, we will discuss how, how that money will be rolled out. And then lastly, yesterday was primary election day, and, and I want to make sure that we draw attention to the county staff that, that led this effort. And particularly Commissioner Harvey, who was here all day yesterday. And, and for his leadership, Gail Humphrey, our, our division leader for the Board of Elections and Director Tom Frytag for their excellent management of the entire process. We had representation from almost every county department, which we saw during the general election last year, but it was, it ran like a well-oiled machine. And, and I want to make sure that everyone knows that it was at the, at the flawlessly-led effort of Randy Miller, our own, who managed both, we have two rooms in, in Board of Elections, and he managed the process flow of, of each and every ballot to make sure that they were opened and counted and scanned. And we, we can't thank you enough, Randy, so thank you for that. And then to all of the candidates who, who ran, it was a very large ballot, and, and we wish you luck in, in the general in November. So that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Solicitors report. Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Commissioner. On this World Day for Cultural Diversity, I'm really happy to announce two initiatives by the Law Department, doing our part to promote the Commissioner's mission of promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. And before I get into those, I, I would like to take the moment just to reflect back on, on how much progress has been made over these last 15 months, which included the onboarding of the county's first-ever Project Diversity Officer, Bernard Griggs, who's been such a wonderful ally and, and partner to work on. And I really thank him for all of his leadership, working with Bernard and Margie. We're very excited about the new Diversity and Inclusion Committee that's getting together this month, that's going to continue these dialogues and continue these initiatives. And, and our department has been really proud to, to play our role in supporting the Commissioner's initiatives and everything, from the ban the box and, and fair pay policies, which really pushed back against some of the, the forces that kept pay and opportunities down for, for women and people of color. And the creation of the New Americans Advisory Commission, which has reached out to make sure that, that voices everywhere in the county are being heard. And so we're now really proud to do more in terms of looking inward with what we can do with our department. I, I'm very happy to report that as we've taken the last year to really build up our team and, and making sure that the county had the best possible law department it could to not only make legal services more efficient, but more effective, that in that process, we have created a, a department that is richly diverse in gender and ethnic diversity. Our entire department is predominantly women, I'm proud to say. And the majority of our attorneys are women, people of color or both. And so now, after speaking with one of my colleagues in, in another law department who strongly recommended this program, we are going to, to seek the support and recognition for Bucks County in seeking what's called Mansfield Certification. Some people know, I'm sure Commissioner Harvey has, has spoken about this before. 50 years before women in this country were guaranteed the right to vote, a woman named Arabella Mansfield became the first woman admitted to practice law in this country. And she became a leader in the, in the women's suffrage movement. And in her honor, there has been a certification for law departments across the country. It began in corporate America and has now been expanding into public departments like county government, wherein departments who are diligent and vigilant about making sure that everyone gets fair consideration, that we're not overlooking any communities, particularly those who have been historically underrepresented, whether that's women, community of colors, the LGBTQ community, people that have disabilities or other challenges, that we are proactively making sure that we are giving active consideration when we hire people for our department, hire attorneys, when we promote people, when we have opportunities to, to serve in, in high-profile cases. And so it's, it's a long process, but I'm very excited to announce that we are going, beginning that process now. We feel very optimistic, given the record that we have so far about how that will go. And we hope that that will, as I said, help do our part in promoting the Commissioner's mission. And the second announcement concerns our, our effort to continue to use our leverage as a, as a customer of legal services. And another initiative that has been promoted across the country, again, starting with corporate America and now building out into public law departments, has been to promote private law firms to embrace these same goals. And as we have become more of an in-house law department, the competition to sign the county as a client for new cases has become even more robust. And, and so as we look forward, as we think about looking among very qualified law firms and lawyers, looking to provide very high-level representation, we are going to be also making sure that, that we are hearing what these, these firms, and I'm, I'm speaking primarily of, of medium-sized or larger law firms, what they are doing to advance equity and inclusion in their ranks. And so I, I am going to be reaching out to the Bucks County Bar Association and other legal stakeholders in the community to help us put together a working group that will come back with a recommendation to the Commissioners about just what that looks like, to again, make sure that we're doing everything that we can to continue this mission, continue this mission and to spread this message that this is a welcoming county and that we value and promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you. I want to echo Ms. McKevitt's comments, thanking all the people who worked yesterday. I see our public defender is here. She was here bright and early yesterday morning and put in a shift helping to open ballots and, you know, open envelopes. And so we really appreciate her. And as Ms. McKevitt said, we had people from all over the county coming in from, you know, 6:30 in the morning yesterday, all the way up until about midnight last night, coming to work, work a shift, you know, four hours, eight hours. Some people were there 12 hours. Quite a few people who were there in November. And so they, it was, it really was a great team and, and, you know, can't, you really can't say enough. And I think the people who, who know this gentleman and who work with him will agree with this. You really can't say enough good things about Randy Miller and everything he does, how hard he works and how effective he is at helping to train people and helping to keep things organized. And it really was, it really was like a Swiss watch, you know, watching things move. We would love to be able to say that everything went flawlessly yesterday, and I think it did for a very, very long time. We did unfortunately have an issue with the vendor who works on our website and where we communicate our results. There were some issues back last year, which the vendor told us that they were going to fix, and we worked pretty closely with them. And we let them know that this is, this is a big file. This is a lot of people running for office. This is a lot of offices, so you ready for this? And they said they were, and obviously they were not. So I'm not real happy about that. And I apologize to the people out there who were looking for results at certain times. And I can assure you that our staff here was doing everything they needed to do, on time and efficiently and well. But unfortunately, there was that problem with that vendor. And so the Commissioners and the Board of Elections will make a decision about where we go from here. But, but again, you know, we, we strive to do things better every single time we do it. There were a lot of things we did yesterday that were vastly improved upon based on the experiences from November, and we're going to keep getting better. And one of the things I am interested in, in hearing, and I'll, I think we've mentioned this before, but I don't remember if we mentioned it at the Commissioners' meeting or if we only mentioned it at the Board of Elections' meeting, but there is a nonprofit group called Vote at Home, which is nonpartisan. And they go around, they're made up of election officials with decades of experience running elections all over the country. And they've been working with our team really since the winter on analyzing our process and, and the things we do well and giving us advice on things that we can do better. And two of the members of that organization were here yesterday for pretty much the entire time, for about 12 hours, seeing everything we did. They were here on Monday, getting, seeing, seeing all the preparations. They had in-depth interviews over the past several months with myself, with Ms. Humphrey, with Tom Frytag. So, you know, they were very impressed with what we've been doing. And they're going to put out a report that'll, that'll give us some guidelines on things they think we can do better and, and things that, you know, they, they really want to commend us on. So I'm looking forward to hearing that. And the last thing I'll say is just, you know, this is our last meeting before Memorial Day. And, you know, oftentimes you, you think of Memorial Day as the, you know, unofficial beginning of summer and, and, you know, certainly with the vaccination rates going up and being able to see the bottom half of people's faces for the first time in a year, you know, and people might be planning a little bit more, you know, exuberant Memorial Day than they had last year. And sometimes people assume, you know, they think of Memorial Day as a day to celebrate anybody who served in the military. But Memorial Day is unique in, in what it's for. I mean, Veterans Day in November, of course, is celebrating anybody who served in the military, any branch, it's overseas, at home, you know, a time of peace, time of war. Memorial Day is specific for those, over 1 million Americans who, since the 70 those, over 1 million Americans who, since the 1770s, have given their life for this country. And no matter how they perished, no matter where, no matter when. And so it's always, I think, you know, a very appropriate time to think about the lives that we are living and the lives that were lost, so that we could live these lives, and ask ourselves if we're living the kind of lives that's worth the sacrifice of those 1 million people. And so it's always sort of, in my mind, reflective, you know, am I earning, you know, what was lost so that I could be here? I think it's good for everybody just to take a minute before the hot dogs and the beer and, you know, the Indy 500, to think about whether or not we're living the kind of life that would be deserving of the sacrifices of people from, you know, Bunker Hill to Fallujah and everywhere in between. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's very important. Thank you. Commissioner DeJordano?
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank everybody for yesterday, for Election Day. It's, I am absolutely in awe of the work that the people at the Board of Elections and people who came to volunteer and help out. Just absolutely in awe of what they were able to accomplish yesterday. And Margie, our COO, talked and thanked everybody, but she neglected to say that she was here after 3 o'clock in the morning, as was her administrative assistant, Liz Gates. 3 o'clock in the morning, and Gail's shaking her head, and I know she was here as well. And Commissioner Harvey was here late, helping out. I mean, just absolutely in awe of what they've been able to do. And I just want to thank them from myself and the people of Bucks County. And I know we've been talking about this for a long time, but I just think it's important to remind the legislature and the governor that the counties need help. Wouldn't have to be here till 3 o'clock in the morning and rushing through this if we were able to have some time before election to open these ballots and scan them. And not count, again, we're not going to count them till after the polls are closed. But they call that precanvassing, or whatever you want to call it. So just, again, encourage the legislature and the governor to work together to try to get this done, hopefully before the November election. It would really help the counties out an awful lot. And, you know, the legislature and the governor are elected officials and have gone through election, and they realize how important it is for the candidates to know what the results are on election night and not have to wait till the next day or two or three or four days afterwards to know who won and lost. It is really important. I ran 13 times for state representative. I know how anxious I was. I know how anxious the other candidates are. So I think it's important that we get something done so that we can know the results on election night and take a lot of this extra work and anxiety away from the staff and the Board of Elections, even though here in Bucks County, they just did a phenomenal job. So I want to thank everybody for that. And just one more thought, because Dr. Damsker, I mean, I think he just made an incredible point. Me and Commissioner Harvey together made a public service announcement this week that should be up and playing around about the importance of getting vaccinated. And as we talked about, this is not a Republican or Democratic issue. It is not a black or white issue. It is not a young or old issue. All three of us Commissioners are vaccinated. We think it's important that everyone in the county get vaccinated. I know there's some people out there that have concerns. I truly believe it is absolutely safe to be able to get vaccinated. It protects not only yourself, but the people that you are around. And the point Dr. Damsker made was there are 50 people hospitalized in Bucks County right now with a serious COVID illness, and 49 of those 50 have not been vaccinated. So one who was hospitalized had been vaccinated, but the other 49 were not vaccinated. And I think that's a great point to show you that getting vaccinated really works. So I would encourage our residents to, who have not been vaccinated, to really consider getting vaccinated. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And moving to our last, I think, brief public comment. Do we have any online public comment?
No, Commissioner.
Is there any here in the room? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then?